Okay, all right. Welcome, one and all, to the Boulder City Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, November 17th, 2021. Thank you all for being here. And so I've called the meeting to order. And for those who are streaming this, we like to confirm the posting. The agenda has been posted along with the package. And I would like to note that the Planning Commission is here and present with the exception of two members, Beth Bonner and Stephen Rudd. Let's move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united on individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. And each person would have up to five minutes to speak on that agenda item. Also recognize that each item in this agenda package is, in fact, a public hearing, so there will be an opportunity to speak during that agenda item. So without further ado, we're going to move, I'm sorry. Would anyone like to be heard during this public comment period? Seeing none?
I'm sorry, public comment on anything, any particular item?
No, it would, it has, at this moment, public comment would have to be confined to one of the two items on the agenda.
Okay.
And as I've mentioned, both of those items are public hearing or include a public hearing, and you'll have an opportunity to speak during that agenda item as well. Tammy, do I need to wait for phone calls at this moment?
If nobody's interested in the public here in the council chamber, you can open up the phone lines.
Thank you. So we'll open up the phone line to anyone who would like to be heard at this public comment period. The call-in number is 702-589-9629. And for those who are new to this, there's a 30-second delay, so we'll wait at least 45 seconds. Hearing no calls, we're going to move on to the, we'll close the public hearing, I'm sorry, close the comment period and move on to the first agenda item. And this is approval of the minutes of the October 20th, 2021 regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Does anyone have any comments or corrections to the agenda of that meeting? Does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in, well, wait a minute. Yeah, does anyone else have any comments? All in favor of giving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Agenda item number two, possible action. This is V-21-653, Neil Parks on behalf of Hope Baptist Church. This is a public hearing on an application for a variance in the R3 multiple-family residential zone to permit a playground shade structure to extend in front of the church, whereas Section 11-20-2.B1C of the city code prohibits accessory structures in the front yard. And could we get a report from city staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The church sits on about three-quarters of an acre of land with the front of the building set back approximately 83 feet from the front property line along Avenue B. A large playground area was built and fenced in 2019, located partially in front of the building. The church would now like to add a large shade cover over the playground area, and the shade structure will be set back approximately 46 feet from the front property line. The zoning ordinance defines a front yard as the entire yard area between the front of the building and the front street, as distinguished from what we call the required front yard, which is just the minimum front setback area. And the code prohibits accessory structures from being located in a front yard. In this case, the existing playground, as you can see from the aerial photos and exhibits, already extends in front of the building. The playground itself did not require a building permit, and the fencing around it is allowed per code because you can have fencing in a front yard. The variance is only needed for placing the shade structure within the front yard, even though the structure is well beyond the minimum required front setback of 15 feet for the R3 zone. The staff report goes over the five required criteria that must be met in order for the Planning Commission to approve a variance, and it includes information about those criteria, including references to the unusual circumstance of this building sitting far back on the property, especially as compared to all the other buildings around it, as well as other similar situations elsewhere in the city. The staff report concludes with alternate findings that the commission can use to either approve or deny the request. And if approved, one standard condition is suggested, that being that the variance approval is based on the plans and information submitted and discussed as part of the request, and that the variance would not apply to any deviations to the plans if those plans are changed relative to this request.
Thank you, Susan. Is the applicant present, and would he like to say a little bit more on the matter?
Well, thank you for having me here. At Hope Church, it's kind of a unique setup with, don't ask me why, but the building is set like Ms. Susan said.
May I, excuse me, may I interrupt you for a moment?
Yes.
For the record, would you please state your name?
Oh, I'm Neil Parks, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
But anyway, getting back to the, where the building sits, the church is a community church. It reaches out. We do a lot of benevolent things throughout the community, help with all the athletic barbecues and stuff, and it, the list just goes on and on. We're kind of a unique setting here in the church as, as Pastor was just sharing with me today, that the attendance was about 150 people on Sunday, and 50 of them were children. So we've got almost 35 percentile of our congregation is kids. And I got some pictures on my phone that when they get out of Sunday school, they're just ripping it apart out there. And like Ms. Susan said, we got the permit for the footings and whatnot, to put the fence up, to enclose everything for safety. That's kind of the big key here is safety. So with that said, the one thing that is kind of, kind of the headbutt there, if you will, is June, July, and August, part of September, when it's about 105 to 110 degrees. And so these kids love it, but that's one reason they like to come together. But this, this heat, and I don't have to tell anybody that, I've been here for 25 years, it's stifling sometimes. And so we're just asking the Plan Commission if they would be so kind as to consider the protection of our kids as they go out once a week, sometimes twice a week, depending on what's going on at the church, to where they could have some shade and kind of enjoy themselves. And it's just a great family moment for everybody.
Do we have any questions of the applicant? I have one, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Marvin?
Yes, just a couple of things. I went over and looked at the playground, it looks very nice.
Thank you.
The job you did on it. And the only other thing, is there any issue with the awning itself relative to the distance from the building? I'm just talking about fire code. Is that an issue at all?
Well, we have to go by building code as well. I mean, and you said an important word there, and that falls on the architectural and the plan check and the, and the building official. This is just kind of step one. Now we've got to, we've got to go on and get our permit from there, and we've got to comply with the safety issues that the IBC and the building codes bring down. And so we just want to be prepared if, if we're, if God blesses this, that we can get through the permit process, and then we would already have your okay with it. So to answer that question, we're within eight inches.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I can, the plans have already gone through the plan check process. That's how zoning discovered this problem. So the zoning request was already routed to building and fire, and they had no comments about this. So whatever building code requirements for materials are necessary will be met.
Thank you, Susan. Any other questions for the applicant? I have one simple question. Are there, you'd mentioned that the kids enjoy playing on the playground, I presume maybe a little bit before the church service or before Sunday school and after certainly. Are there any other programs throughout the week or during the summer that would have the kids playing?
Good, good question, because we do an outreach to the community, and it's called Awonis. And what we do is we bring them together on Wednesdays, and they come together and have a meal, and then they're able to, we're able to congregate. This is open to the public. This isn't just a denominational thing. And a lot of times we'll find that moms and dads, they want their kids to know God. You know, we just said Pledge of Allegiance to our flag, and, and so this is a moment where they can come on Wednesday night, sometimes there, there might be a Saturday, there could be something, you know, in between all that, the holidays are coming up and stuff like that. But the biggest part of it would be on a Sunday and a Wednesday. And church service runs from like 9:30, it gets out about 12:00, and then the Wednesday night thing runs somewhere between 5:00 and maybe 7:00, 7:30. So, and we are, we keep our gates locked, and there's always adults in the area, so we're all about safety.
Well, thank you very much. We sure appreciate you coming and sharing your information with us.
My pleasure. Thank you.
This item is, in fact, a public hearing. Anyone who would wish to be heard on this subject, please so indicate in this crowd. All right, let's open it up to the folks who might be streaming the meeting. Once again, this is a public comment period for agenda item number two relating to Hope Baptist Church. And the number to call in is 702-589-9629. And we'll wait, excuse me, wait a few moments for anyone who might want to be heard. Hearing no calls, we'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the Planning Commission for deliberation and motion. I think I'd like to start on this. Well, actually, one other thing I'd like to just note, this is a variance request, and as such, we are the folks making the decision on this. Our decision can be appealed to the city council, but absent any appeals, our decisions would stand. As with any variance request, we certainly have to look at, you know, the surrounding areas, certainly, we have to look at precedent, we have to look at, of course, the five elements that we make a decision based on. And one of them is the circumstances. In this case, I personally have to agree with the applicant that they have a unique situation. I would also just opine that, given that to the north, this property abuts the backside of, of the church located on the corner. It abuts the parking lot, both for this church and for the, and for the apartment complex to the south. And to the east of this property is the front of the rec center, the pool. As such, it seems to me that the visual impact will be minimal to surrounding, to the surrounding neighborhood, and I certainly have no problem with approving this variance.
Mr. Chairman, before we take any action, I did have a question for staff. And one of the things under item C, I don't know what page it is now, doesn't really matter, but the statement is that comments received from staff indicated no objection to the variance request. And I was just curious as to who actually commented on it.
We typically route these to building, public works, and fire.
Within, within this crowd? Is your mic on?
No, I was just going to say that the comments are limited to employees of the city.
Yes, but public hearing notices were mailed to all property owners within 500 feet.
Right.
If any comments had been received, they would have been provided to you.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is pretty darn simple. Staff did a good job in the packet on pages 48 and 49 outlining the, how we could conditionally approve this, addressing all the different variance requirements. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve variance V-21-653, subject to the staff's condition, number one on page 49, that this variance approval is based on the plans and information submitted and discussed as part of the variance request, and that the variance shall not apply to deviations to the plans if the scope of the variance is expanded beyond that shown on the plans and submitted information.
Mr. Lessop, does that include the findings?
Yes, absolutely.
All second. Very good. Do we have any other discussion on this matter? Let's put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No opposed, the variance passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yes, indeed.
All righty, that brings us to agenda item number three, the land management process list. And for possible action, the 2022 land management process list, it's resolution number 1208 for the city of Boulder City. This will be a public hearing and a recommendation to city council on the two proposals for the land management process list for 2022. And these include LMP number 18-03, and it's Boulder City Library proposal for nine tenths of an acre at 651 Adams Boulevard for government uses. And land management plan number 22-02, it's the Delmar Energy Storage LLC proposal for 38.5 acres at 590 El Dorado Valley for a solar battery storage facility. Susan, do you have a staff report on that?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I do. So good evening, members of the Planning Commission, Michael Mays, Community Development Director, for the record. So this is an annual process to give the citizens of our community an opportunity to weigh in on the possible sale or lease of city-owned land. This process was created over 20 years ago. It is, what I like to emphasize, is the very beginning of the conversation. So the intent was to give the community a chance to weigh in very early on, when an entity is interested in city-owned land, to be able to provide comment on that potential lease and/or sale. This process, as I said, is the very beginning of the process. Even if a parcel, a city-owned parcel is added to the list, it may still require additional steps, obviously. If it's over an acre in size, it has to go to the voters to weigh in on whether they want to sell the property. If a lease is necessary, that is obviously required to be considered by the city council. If rezoning or an amendment to the master plan need to be evaluated, that would come later. This is the initial step. And so every year, the city provides notice if there is interested parties in city-owned land to submit their applications in September. City received five applications. Those applications were brought before the city council in October. That's the first step in the process. City council decides whether they want to entertain the potential land lease or sale of city-owned property. The city council in October advanced two for your consideration. And so the intent for the Planning Commission is to evaluate the requests and provide a recommendation back to the city council. Before February 15th of 2022, the city council will then reevaluate your recommendations on these two potential additions to the list, and they'll make a decision whether to add them to the list. For your benefit on the screen, I have the existing list of the parcels that are on the land management process list. This is in your packet, it's also on the city's website. In addition to the matrix, we also have corresponding maps that I've included in the packet, so you could see the existing properties that are on that list. Both, we have what we refer to as the El Dorado Valley, and then this map, which is the townsite area, and it shows the existing properties. So I just wanted to briefly highlight each of the properties for your consideration tonight, and, and then can answer any questions. And as the chairman noted, this is also a public hearing. So with the first one, LMP 1803, the reason why its designation is 1803 is it's been before the Planning Commission and the city council previously. This is .9 acres, that is directly east of the existing Boulder City Library. The library is interested in acquiring the property. They don't have a specific use at this point, but they would either utilize it for meeting space with the existing former Boys and Girls Club building that's on the property. They may lease it out, they may ultimately demolish the property, but the library believes it's important for this parcel to be a part of the adjoining property that is part of the library. As you can see in the staff report, we show that the master plan designates it for parks and recreation purposes, and the zoning identifies it for government parks. So those are already in line with the library's requested use. And we have Jeff Frieden, the vice president, sorry, the vice chair of the library board in attendance tonight to answer any questions of the Planning Commission. The second consideration for you this evening is what we're referring to is LMP 22-02. This is the request by Delmar Energy Storage LLC. They are looking at 38.5 acres located at 590 El Dorado Valley Drive. As you can see on the map on the screen and in your packet, this is in the El Dorado Valley among the solar projects that currently exist in that area. The purpose of Delmar's request is to enter into a lease with the city, there's already an existing lease with the University of Nevada Research Foundation, which is entertaining this sublease for the purpose of a utility-scale lithium-ion battery storage facility at that site. As with the other requests we've provided in your staff report, the existing master plan designation, which is manufacturing energy, and the current zoning, which is energy resource, ER. So the master plan and zoning already are in line with the proposed request for this use. And Matt Gilliard is the Director of Development with REV Renewables and is in the audience to answer any questions of the Planning Commission on that item. So we have for your consideration this evening, resolution 1208, if the Planning Commission desires to recommend to the city council... commission desires to recommend to the city council that these two properties should be added to the list as requested. The resolution's ready to go, and obviously, you can modify that how you see fit. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, and do we have any questions of staff at this moment? I'm going to ask the question I'd forgotten to ask earlier. Notices were apparently sent out to surrounding residents, and seeing none in our package, I presume we received no comments to certainly the library district's request.
That is correct, so notices are sent to all property owners within three-hundred feet of each of the properties.
Right, right. Alright, thank you, and seeing no other questions for staff, let's take these in order. With the representative of the Boulder City Library, or the library district, please stand, and if you, certainly if you have any more you'd like to add, we'd sure appreciate hearing that, state your name for the record if you would.
Good evening, Jeff Breeden, for the Boulder City Library Board of Trustees. I think Mr. Mays summarized our request fairly simply. At this time, we don't have an identified use. As you may or may not remember, we proposed an expansion of the library to the voters two or three years ago now that was denied. As a part of that is when we started thinking about this adjacent property, because when the basement gets built out, and someday it certainly will be, ingress and egress from that bottom floor is very difficult with the current property line that we have. We have an easement for that driveway that this property would put into our portfolio if that were to be a part of it, and it would enable us to potentially do, you know, a playground, speaking of what we were talking about earlier, or community gardens, or something that could be accessed from the bottom floor of the library, should the expansion ultimately decide that. At the time as well, there was significant need for meeting space, and we were looking at potentially using that building, although even then, three years ago, it probably needed to be knocked down and rebuilt, but something that was outside of the library that could potentially have, you know, remote locks or something where a group could use it at eight o'clock at night, or on a Saturday maybe when the library wasn't open. Meeting space is different now, so we don't have that need anymore either. So over the time that this has been out sort of in the world, things have changed on us, but we still feel like it's an important thing to add to our portfolio now that the opportunity is here, because if there is another use for that property and somebody develops it, it will probably never get another chance, and we think it's the best use of it to add into library purposes for future expansion.
Very good. Do we have any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I do.
Mr. Marvin.
Some of the people I had visited with were referring to that as maybe a potential area for park, for parking when there are major events. But if it's used at all not as a structure, not as an expanded structure, has there been any discussion about that as a option, or is that not really feasible?
It could be parking so long as the parking wasn't for an event at the library, because as of today, there's no way to go from that grade up to the grade that the library's set on. However, that was in our architectural plan, you know, hoping that we might get it, when we were thinking about building out the bottom, was to do a driveway, and in fact, we had contemplated asking for just an easement to do the driveway in the event we didn't get the whole property. But in the intervening time, I would say it's a very, I mean, the odds are good that that building is not recoverable, and it would need to be knocked down, which means it would be a dirt lot that could be used for remote parking for something, if there was maybe art in the park or something, if that was to be used, I don't know how we would work that out. The other thing I'll say, and that I said at city council, is I know that the fire department is using that now for training, and we are also open to, because we don't have an immediate need, if there is a use by the department that makes sense and adds to the safety of the citizens, perhaps it can be, you know, a grant almost with a city leaseback, or an agreement to give the building five years from now, or something like that, so that there's some certainty around it, but the department can continue to use the building for training. We would be, you know, more than open to that, but of course, we'd have to work out between the city and the library, and there's all sorts of questions around that, but we're open to that.
Okay, thanks. I have another question.
Yes.
Excuse me, the basement area, which is generally a storage area, and I've been in that basement, and it's kind of scary, is there a plan to utilize that for the public at all?
Well, that was our whole gist of our bond issue that we did a few years back, was to do a full renovation and put in a theater down there, a children's, expand the children's area, put in a teen area where homework could be done, and all sorts of things, a full expansion of that to be a part of the library. We have, you know, there's a staircase, there's a working elevator, it is absolutely, well, not ready to go, but it's roughed in, and it was always contemplated that it would eventually be just a two-story library. But it wasn't needed at the time, seventeen years ago when it was built. We believe it's needed now, the voters had a different thought about debt, that's okay, and so we're working within the constraints of our budget to determine how to utilize that way in the best way possible. As you say, it's storage now mostly for the Boulder City Museum. Much of their collection is stored in, what would that be, the north end, no, the south end of the basement. The things that aren't on display are in our basement in, on racks, and we're happy to partner with them for that.
So, the library hasn't contemplated a modified improvement in the facility?
We have contemplated, but money is the issue, sir, we're saving money.
I mean, not a bond issue.
Yeah, since we can't borrow, we're saving and trying to determine how to leapfrog, you know, and do it in pieces, or do we wait, you know, how do we prioritize our needs?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant? Very good, thank you very much for your time this evening. Would the applicant for Delamar Energy Storage, please step forward and repeat your name for the record?
Good evening, my name is Matthew Gilliland, I'm a developer with REV Renewables, and here on behalf of Delamar Energy Storage LLC. REV is part of the LS Power Group, which is a national power infrastructure business with over thirty years of experience developing, building, owning, and operating power infrastructure across the United States. We build everything from hydro power plants to conventional fossil fuel plants to solar, wind, and energy storage projects like the one before you today. We also own and operate transmission lines, including one here in the Eldorado Valley, so we are existing members of the business community here. I wanted to share a little bit about what I see as the benefits of this project. As Mr. Mays mentioned, there is an existing lease with the University of Nevada for the land, but it is currently vacant and going unused. So, this project, if we, with your approval, are able to acquire rights to build here, would bring the land back into productive use, and we would pay market rents to the city for many decades to come, as well as bring considerable investment to the property, generating sales and property taxes, construction jobs, and of course, skilled labor jobs operating the facility. Now, I understand the original mission of the university here was to advance the research and development in renewable energy, and so, as part of this project, we have committed to the university to provide sustained funding for energy research and education programs at the university. And that's something we're really excited about, because these energy storage projects are really essential in the new energy economy. You can all see the vast fields of solar farms in the Eldorado Valley. As more and more of these get built, we will have a need to store energy to be used at night, and when the sun's not shining, or the wind is not blowing. And so, a project like this one can benefit not only the city and the university, but also all of the existing solar power plants here in the Eldorado Valley. So, we really see it as a good use of this site. It's an oddly shaped sort of triangular parcel surrounded by solar farms on all sides. We at REV have already built four facilities just like this one, so we are experienced, we're one of the largest energy storage developers in the country, and we believe that this is a good project here for the community. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and would appreciate your support for our application.
Turn your mic off, please.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Please, Mr. Marvin.
A couple of questions, and of course, looking at the map of it, it's hard to visualize, because that little triangle's a mile long, roughly, and at the base, it's what, maybe six or seven hundred feet, something like that? So, how far can you bank your batteries towards the pinnacle? Just curious.
Yeah, it's a great question. One of the nice things about the battery storage technology is that it's modular, and so we can use sort of purpose-built enclosures to fit into more narrow spaces. So, designs I've looked at contemplate using the entire site, if the market can support it. So we have flexibility in our design, to answer your question.
Second question, if it's approved, when would that go into the queue for the ISO?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think, you know, we would move to get into queue as soon as possible. Right now, this is step one, to see if we can move forward. We already have an agreement with the university, but our understanding is that to either sublease or acquire interest in some other manner, we do need to go through this process. So, you know, I think as we proceed over the next year, we would also accelerate other aspects of development, such as the interconnection.
Following question, what's the generation going to be on that? Storage capacity, I mean?
That's to be determined, how big it would be. You know, there are nearly gigawatts of solar farms here, so I would imagine we could build something like our other projects, which are in the one-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty megawatt range.
The one unit out there is two-fifty, isn't it? The one nailed, the one that's already there, that's gone through the queue?
I'm not sure off the top of my head how big that one is.
And there's no capacity relative to this municipality like there is with the solar farm itself, I would assume?
I think I understand your question, which is, this is a wholesale market participant, we would not be providing capacity directly to the city, but it does serve the regional grid and system by improving reliability and providing capacity.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
So with that, we bring it back to the planning commission. I'm sorry. With that, we're going to open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter? Well, there's nobody in the audience I think that would like to be heard, I'm assuming, but if you would, please step forward. Otherwise, let's turn to the folks that may be streaming. Again, this is the public comment period for the land management process, agenda item number three, the call-in number is seven-zero-two-five-eight-nine-nine-six-two-nine, and we'll wait a few moments to provide you an opportunity to dial in. Hearing no phone calls for comments, we'll close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the planning commission for deliberation and a motion. Would anyone like to be heard on this, or make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve planning commission resolution number one-two-zero-eight.
As written?
As written.
Alright, I'll second that motion. Now, we can open it to discussion by the commission.
I have several observations on the library thing that I'd like to share.
Alright.
The area, if you look at the, if you could pull up the map again on the, for the library of that parcel. Okay, thank you, thank you. If you, if you notice, right adjacent to the library, there's a strip there, and those are, it's a parking pad, I don't know, five or six vehicle parking pad, which probably is right by the entrance door to the basement. Once you get any further south than that, there really isn't much that can be done because of the terrain, because from there on, it's just all filled up the side. So, if you're going to do an expansion on the building, that's a limiting factor. Now, if you take that, the road, which I think, is the road in there already dedicated city or not? Do we know?
Are you referring to the access to the Boys and Girls Club? It's not dedicated, it's just a driveway leading to the building.
It's not considered a public street?
No.
Oh, okay. So, but if you take that area, just from the narrow strip, excluding the Boys and Girls Club over to the library, it's roughly half an acre. And some of that, of course, is, well, I assume all of that is, is the city's, or the library's property right now? Is that correct?
You're referring to the property that is at the northwest of the parcel in question?
Right where that number, I can't read it, whatever the number is.
Yeah, everything to, that is part of the library now.
Okay.
Yes.
I guess my question is, I know the fire department utilizes the building down there for training and so on, and it's been kind of a white elephant for a number of reasons. And I think that at one time, didn't the city request interest in purchasing property from individuals? Did they solicit information on people who were interested to buy the property?
This parcel, it's been discussed before, but there's been no formal process.
Oh, okay. Other than the fact that the building's been neglected, it's an amazing structure, if you look at it. It's, the, the foundation, the walls, the whole thing, it's a very stable structure, it's over three thousand square feet. Obviously, the inside would have to be Obviously, the inside would have to be gutted and a number of other things. But I guess my question is, how much benefit is it, the difference in the benefit to the library if they don't acquire that section? And maybe, maybe the gentleman from the library board has an opinion on that? You know, I'm not sure, I'm gonna... Can't do that?
Tammy, we have a motion that's been seconded. I don't know if there's the opportunity to bring the public back up.
And I would like to maybe kind of just remind us all that our purpose here is really to make a recommendation to city council as to whether or not the proposed disposition of this parcel of land, in this case, holding it and sitting it aside for the library, is an appropriate use. It really, I think it's beyond the purview of our meeting tonight to discuss too much detail about whether or not, you know, the quality of the building, whether or not the library's, you know, stated potential uses are appropriate. It's really simply, does this parcel of land, does it seem to us, and would we recommend to city council, that that is an appropriate use of this land?
Mr. Chairman, I guess that's kind of where I'm coming from. I'm kind of, my viewpoint is that it's partially appropriate.
Okay?
Okay.
Well, I appreciate that, and good comments, good thoughts. Does anyone, so we have a motion, and it's been seconded. And that motion, of course, is to approve Resolution 1203 as written, 1208 as written. And so we've had some comment. Does anyone else have any comments they'd like to make before we take it to a vote?
Mr. Chairman, if this might help the commission to know, since this property is already on the land management process list for residential use, that doesn't go away. What's before the commission tonight is your consideration as to whether or not the property should also be on the list for potential governmental use. So that would leave it open to still either government use or residential use, because that residential use is already on the list. And my recollection, I think, is why that was put on the list initially for residential use is because the property to the south is the city's old animal shelter. And that was originally, I believe, approved by the voters so that the city could dispose of that if we so chose. And there were issues regarding that property and easements across it and utilities, such that I believe one of the proponents for that site thought that, well, you know, you might need the property to the north being the subject parcel for possible access or to maneuver around the utility issue on the old animal shelter site. So it's a long way of saying that, again, your recommendation tonight is whether or not to add governmental use to the potential uses the property could be used for, because it's already on the list for potential use for residential purposes.
Thank you, Susan. Got clarification? Any further comments on this matter? With that, we'll bring it to the vote. Again, we're voting as to whether or not to approve Resolution Number 1208 as written. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
That's in opposition, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. With that, the motion, the resolution passes and we recommend approval to the city council. Agenda item number four is a monthly progress report on developmental allotments. Thank you. And that brings us to our final public comment opportunity. Anyone wishing to be heard? Anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward and state your name for the record again.
Jeff Breeden again. I just wanted to answer Mr. Marvin's question. The library has no plans to expand our footprint of the building. The building was built with two levels such that you could expand within the existing envelope. So at this time, anything that we did outside would be either a separate building or would be an outdoor use, a park, a playground, a seating, whatever it might be. But just to satisfy your curiosity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? With that, let's bring it to our viewers. The number to call in for this final public comment period is 702-589-9629. And once again, we'll hold for a few moments. Hearing no comments, we close the public comment period and adjourn the meeting of, geez, I forgot the date. Anyway, we adjourned the planning commission meeting. Thank you very much.
My question.
Yeah.
Why would you not separate those two land management?